Get the meeting started and we'll turn it over to you to present your budget.
All right, thank you, thank you counsel. So that the 2026 budget for Public Works start out that page or anything from the direct stores. So this would be both wastewater treatment and sewer maintenance division. We'll start with page 72 if you have a budget book.
Which?
Uh, one you're using.
One on the left side.
Picture some.
Okay.
And if you want to go to your, that's your budget book. You want to go to your handout book. I think sewer begins on forty-three. And that's just, that's this book right here. The book, handout book.
What page is this?
Yes, seventy-two. That's just a summary.
Yeah, we have a summary up on the screen there for 2026 budget. Our total FTE count eighty-eight point nine. That's broken, that's the combined of the, both the treatment plant and the maintenance division. That includes both seven-seven-one and seven-seven.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
Oh, that's Kathy? No. Kathy?
Just keep going.
Oh, okay. All right. Did you want to go over the revenues Lisa in sewer or do you want to do that?
We can just do that when we do the revenues.
Okay.
On another night.
Okay. So basically in the, in the seven-seven-one budget, pretty much the only real adjustments we have there is a small increase in the tool and uniform benefits line item. And that's all contractual to three thousand dollar bump. Other than that, I think that budget. If you have any questions on any of those line items, you can ask Basil or myself. FTE count seventy-point-five.
The lease agreement's going up and that's because of the bond issue that we just did. And that ties into, maybe I should talk about the revenues, that ties into the revenues. We did a five-year revenue ordinance last year to bring all of the rates up to the amount they would need to be to pay the bond issue on the additional debt. And Basil could probably explain what the additional debt is going to be for.
It's a five-year capital plan for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. There's projected to be about thirty-four to thirty-five million dollars for those improvements over the next five years. That's why we had petition counsel in twenty-four to do a rate structure so that we could pay the increased debt service over the next five years to cover the bond.
Did that all last year? Good.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
That's what made it possible.
Any additional questions on wastewater? If we move over to seven-seven-three, so page seventy-seven of your book, the only real adjustment we have in the, this is the sewer maintenance division. We increased heat, light, power, and water on forty-four-seven by about twelve thousand dollars and you can see why that is there because our, up through October thirty-first, we were, we were running over on those utilities. FTE count remains the same. So, any questions on that? If not, one other slide I just wanted to show, if Melissa could put up page forty-six of the comparison of the sewer rates, you'll see the average quarterly bill, one oh eight oh three. And if there's a breakdown of all the municipalities there, running from Greentown ship down through the borough northeast and pretty much puts us kind of right in the center. So, kind of right between Harbor Creek and Wesleyville. If you look on the chart there, on the far right column. So. Harbor Creek's one thirty-five and then us and then there's like nine drops to, I think Wesleyville's at ninety-eight fifty. So, just gives you a comparison of where, where the city's at.
Can you remind me again Chuck, you had caught on with just the tiering and how that had worked last time with individual versus?
Yeah, we don't do that anymore.
Okay.
So we used to have a tiering system so that, like you see up here and it says like the CCFs.
Yes.
I can't remember what the, the number was, but it was something along lines like ten thousand CCFs, got like a significant discount of like maybe thirty percent. And if we just stopped doing that, then the residents would benefit and it smoothed out the rates real nicely. So, yeah, so we stopped that tiering, that cut our increase in half.
Thank you.
Do you want to go over the five-year for the wastewater? No? Later.
Okay.
Okay.
We got on sewer? Okay.
We don't have anything to vote for on that.
No.
We did it all last year, so I don't care to hear anything. I'm on it.
So.
Okay.
I'm here, good evening.
Skip it next year too.
You're good for five years actually.
So then we'll go back and, we'll start with the general fund budget, kind of back, go backwards. We'll start the general fund budget and work forward, so director's office.
What page?
Page forty-seven. And there's, there's no adjustments here from, we carried everything over from twenty-twenty-five over to twenty-twenty-six on the expenditure side.
Cool, your budget's coming in a thousand dollars less. Great.
Yeah. Okay. Seven oh seven is engineering. It's the next page, so these will just go in order, so we're over to page forty-eight. There was nothing here, I don't believe, that changed.
Ten thousand less. Great.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, I'll keep moving unless counsel wants to. Seven oh nine is traffic engineering, the next page. This one here on the, between twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six, there was a few rebalancing went on, there was some adds and some deducts on some of the operating expenses, but the end of the column there, you can see slight increase, but there's some just pluses and minuses down through there. Slight increase in torn uniform up on forty-twenty-four, again, that's all contractual. We have three Teamsters in that office.
Repairs and maintenance has gone up, you know, double from where it was two years ago. Any particular reason?
As far as I know, Councilman Nelson, that's just due to the repair and maintenance of the traffic signals and the light, and the city-owned lighting. Was there anything Liam, specific on that one? An increase in number of lights? Okay. So you're looking, I see you're looking back to twenty-twenty-four. In twenty-twenty, we were running around twenty thousand, now we're up to forty. Okay. All right. Bureau of Streets?
Can I hop us back for one second? Sorry, my brain is taking a second. Can you, so we're at seven oh seven again, so a couple pages back. Remind me again, can you walk me through the casual labor please?
Oh, sure. So the casual labor, we have a, we have a part-time engineer in that office. He's, he was with us the last two years. He's, he works about twenty-five hours a week. So, then he works all year at reduced hours.
We put that in casual labor because there's no benefits.
Thank you.
Bureau of Streets is on page fifty. And I believe this, this budget, there's no, I believe it's pretty much a mirror image of last year on all the expense side. RFTs at Streets are forty-seven. Paint and Sign Division is on page fifty-two. And same thing here, we have no increases from, in any of the line items from twenty-four, or from twenty-five up to twenty-six.
Back to page fifty, other services and charges, it was budgeted for two thousand, you're up to twenty-two thousand, you're still budgeting for two thousand for next year.
You know Lisa, I have a, in twenty-four, what's, there's a three eighteen in there. Do you see that one? What is that? Leftover snowmageddon bills were there.
Do we need to increase that budget?
Hard to say. I mean, I don't normally budget for snowstorms. Like if something like that happens.
Where would it get, so if we're not putting it in the budget, just in case that happens, where would, where does it likely get pulled from? If we go over like we did in twenty-four and twenty-five?
Well, normally we would transfer from other funds that aren't using them or contingency fund in the general government.
Take like a line right above it for the repair and maintenance, how it's under by so much? Just make that quick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Does counsel have any other questions on Streets or Paint and Sign? Okay.
One question. So with, when we, we went over the police and fire budget, well, we have a lot of the cameras and stuff that are going to be maintained, is that, is the maintenance of all the cameras going to be out of the police budget? Will parks, or will, like, Public Works at any point be responsible for maintaining if something else comes down and getting out there and fixing? Because if we're adding more cameras, essentially that could be more work.
Yeah, there's no money in the Public Works budget for the police cameras.
That might just be something to flag then.
We might need to talk to the police about that.
Yeah.
Make sure there's enough in their budget to handle maintenance.
Because I, I get, like, we got a grant to get a lot of them put up, but they don't even contain, and cameras go out of style really fast. At least, that's what my phone says.
Oh, is it? Axon? Okay.
How long does that contract go?
It's a ten-year contract.
So they'll do all the maintenance for ten years?
They, on the body cams, the tasers, the cameras.
Like the ones that are installed?
Digital storage. License, yeah, everything.
Okay, moving on, we have page fifty-three. Is this the municipal garage, Bureau of Fleet of Maintenance? You can see up there, we have twenty-two FTEs, no change there, see a expenditure breakdown where our twenty-twenty-six budget is. There's a, there's a slide in your handout that, handout book page forty-two, maybe Melissa can put up, and this is, this shows just a breakdown of the municipal garage. Our, our fee list on the left side. And then on the right side are our municipal garage clients. We have sixteen of those. I think the last one we added in was Mill Creek and Wesleyville. So.
We'd want to give them an inflation for towing costs on that, that small wrecker?
Oh, the, yeah, the big wrecker, two fifty and the small wrecker's up a hundred.
Yeah, those stayed the same since twenty thirteen. Do we need to?
Yeah.
Increase them?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
I'm probably going to get spammed with a lot of hate mail for saying that right now.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
Time we raise the rates for the neighboring places that come to service, service us. Do you go by the rates that hallmanns would charge or, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. I'll, I'll have to find out, I don't know what year it was, Mr. Przybyszkiewicz.
It was a couple of years ago because the twenty-twenty-three rates are higher than the twenty-twelve rates. That might have been the year that we increased them.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Everything else is going up. Gas is three forty-nine today. We're not through the right across, if we're going to be doing this as a service, we should have our people paid for it. Our city paid for it anyway. Mr. Bruck, you're thinking?
Chuck, are you thinking that's probably a type of? The two thirteen is a two twenty-three? Towing fees?
The twelve and the thirteen?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
But yeah, that's.
It looks like.
Yeah, because that would be a big jump from twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen versus stagnant for thirteen years. That would make more sense.
Yeah.
I guess my point was, we're making incremental increases in sewer and water and garbage and everything else. It's good for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good for one, it should be good for all.
Yep, we'll look at that. Good point, thank you.
I can't remember, my, my first year on council, that was one of the things I, I just haven't looked at in four years. But I was told that there was like an annual review of the pricing where they take bids for certain things, but maybe not towing, like is that one?
I don't know. I haven't seen. Check.
Moving right along Jason, I didn't mean to hold everything up, I just.
Oh, it's all right, good question.
A normal question, I thought I was going through the numbers the other night.
Go to page fifty-five. This is the Bureau of Public Building Maintenance. We had a, a small, we, we rebid the janitorial contract in this past year, so there was a small, it's actually not even reflected in your book, I don't think. Actually might show a decrease, but we had a small increase in forty-fifty-nine for janitorial services for the municipal building. But these other ones, they've all stayed the same. We have four FTEs in that office. And then over to, there's no questions on that. Office, we'll go over to Bureau of Parks and Recreation, it's on page fifty-seven. So this office is going to show an increase of three FTEs. Actually, that'll, that'll show up on page fifty-eight. So this is where we increased, we're proposing an increase of, of three FTEs going from twelve up to fifteen. Bureau of Parks, we have some slides that Melissa can put up that accompany this. But our Recreation, Parks and Open Spaces Plan consultant. We have a design workshop and, oh, you're going to put up the, this is the Ballard King one, I'm sorry. So Ballard King, we have, we have two. We have Ballard King, Table J, and they have the City of Erie comparison at, at thirteen-point-nine, which I believe what that is, if you look, I don't know, do you have the, any further down? But they, they did a calculation. So I know your book reflects twelve there, but actually what it was, was they, they did a, they did a adjustment, almost an interpolation for our seasonal staff. And that's how they, that's how they came up with thirteen-point-nine as essentially a FTE equivalent. And then it shows where we, where we are for community between fifty and hundred thousand population for our parks complement. And then, I don't know, there's, there's some more, there's some more on this page, I don't know if you, you don't have the rest of it. But at, at the end of the day, they recommended an increase in our full-time staffing. And then you have the ones, okay, this is the, okay, this is the design workshop one. And on the very last row, full-time equivalent staff, you see the thirteen-point-nine appears again in the left column at the bottom, under City of Erie, that you can look across. What they did here is they took five comparable cities, South Bend, Indiana, et cetera, the whole way across to Waterloo, Iowa, population, and then us compared to everybody else. And I believe they, they range anywhere from forty up to a hundred and thirteen FTEs. And then we have thirteen-point-nine, so. Then there's one more, there's a bar chart. Yeah, just, that shows level of service, but you have the, you have the bar chart, one that looks like this. No? Okay. There's one, there's one more I have that, that just indicates our thirteen-point-nine and compared to the median, and the national median and the poorer cities, they're up around, I'll, I'll maybe show it here to counsel, but it's, they're up at the seventies, seventy-three and seventy-four, and then where our thirteen-point-nine appears. So what we're asking for there is, is three FTEs to try to just improve our park system and bring us up a little bit. And then in our book, the twelve, the twelve actually, what we really have are seven Teamsters that work on the parks and the boulevards and everything to maintain those. And then we have some special events in that office, and we have clerical, we have supervisory. So really our actual is complement there, the parks level of workers is seven, plus the seasonal.
How many, seven?
Yeah.
So. We've cannibalized that whole department for years though. We've gone down and down and down.
Yeah, it was cut drastically back in, I think it was two thousand and four or so. They cut the, it was a long time ago, twenty years ago, but they cut that department back a lot. And so we're trying to, we'd like to have that, that sort to get built back up, so.
I just worry when we get a study from people out of town who probably see the city for maybe ten hours and write up a five-year plan for us, when they don't know what our city really is. That's, I, that's not a big thing, but it is questionable. You know, why do we have to go outside to look in a mirror and know that we need more people? We could probably, how much did we pay for that study?
I'm not sure if anybody knows that, but I don't know what it was.
I could hire somebody for that.
Could you explain maybe just a little bit of the, the benefit for, that the community would see when we add in these positions? So if those positions, those three extra spots were to come in, what would, what would we project to be changed? Like how would, how would it help improve services?
Oh, yeah, well absolutely. What we have now is we have, we have approximately fifty parks and they're balanced pretty close between east and west sides of the city. The parks employees also mow and maintain all the boulevards. There's a lot of miscellaneous areas they have to cut that are along sections of highway like the east side connectors up in the city. Our playground system, fences, they still do some boarding up of houses. So really what this is going to do is it's going to shore up our, our parks for the future. And as the RPOS plan, it's not, these are actually drafted, as these get finished, then the next step of this is going to be implementation. And so, we, we know this is coming, so we want to get those employees onboarded now so that when this actually is, is, I believe, finished in early twenty-twenty-six, then we'll be able to implement some of the recommendations that come out of this. And I think we all know how important the parks are to the city. And so, this is really, I think, a badly needed compliment to get these onboarded now so that we can prepare for what's, what's coming with this, with this study. And I think everybody knows that there's some ARP money that's been earmarked for the parks.
Are there any plans or what are the plans for Roger Young?
Yes, well, not, not specifics, but they're going to be part of the plan. That park is included, as is all the parks as, as the study. I don't, I don't have specific projects to present to you today for that, that park. But that park has been talked about as, as a key park for this, this whole study and plan that's been undertaken.
Did our consultant have any specific suggestions for Robert Young, Roger Young?
I don't know if that. I don't know if there was anything. Yeah. I don't know if it actually had any, I don't think it was at the level yet of ACHAM specific projects. But it was a lot of community engagement done.
Thank you.
There needs to be attention to that. Former Councilman Keys was bound to determine to put a regulation track there. I'm not sure that the folks that lived in the area really wanted that. I remember when they fought very strongly to have softball fields and soccer fields, which they have. Improvements need to be made definitely over there. I think we have to get a handle on what the people want and not, not forget them.
That's why we're doing it through a parks plan to, they're getting public comments and using all of that information to make the decisions or make recommendations.
I would suggest if you not, haven't done it, is to include the Erie Housing Authority because of their residence right next to the park, plus their residence. Now, I still call it Franklin Terrace, basically walking distance. They should be included in there. As far as planning, organization, of what kind of activities should be attracted, should it be soccer, should it be football? They will be using it probably more often than homeowners in the area. homeowners in the area.
Was it in twenty-three or twenty-four, there was another survey that was being conducted? Because I remember our West Bay front in Best was part of it. Is that also being all rolled into the data that's being, there was a lot of information that was collected during that time, just about parks, the assessments, and a lot of the students in the middle schools were involved in that.
All those surveys?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's gonna be part of all of this?
Yes. I believe that was all rolled into that.
Thank you.
And we meet, we meet regularly with them. We have regular meetings with, with the team on this. So as, as you can see here, it's still in draft form, so it's still being, it's still being finalized.
I know, we're peppering you with a lot of the questions, that also we need planning and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Some of that, some of that, like, I apologize for that, but some of it is, is planning, so.
Yeah.
But we've been working very closely together with Jackie's office on this. Can you move, can you move on? With seven-two-seven.
One more question, please.
Yeah.
Yes, that three new employees that you'll be hiring, would they be mowing people's yards if someone has a yard that is not being taken care of and gets a quality-of-life ticket?
No. No, we generally don't, we generally don't do that. There are some, redevelopment authority, I think, does do have some contract mowing out there for some of theirs, their properties. But our, these new employees would not be tasked with, with that.
Thank you.
Our shade tree budget is on page fifty-nine. No change. In fact, I believe there's two tree removal contracts that will be on your, what will it be, the November nineteenth council meeting coming up, that we set the agenda for this week. So you'll see two contracts on there for, one contract for east side trees and one contract for west side trees. And part of that, part of that is funded out of this.
Wasn't there a grant involved in getting the trees?
Part, well, part of that, you'll see when that comes through, part of that is a grant fund, and then part of it will be the seven-two-seven general fund. And I believe both those resolutions will be on your next agenda.
Yeah.
For the nineteenth.
I'm sure you did a lot of work on that.
Yes. And that, that actually finishes our general fund, and then next we'll be moving to enterprise. And then we'll, we'll walk through all the enterprise funds with the exception of Sauer, which we already covered. So the first one is the stormwater fund. This is on page sixty-nine of the, of the budget book. With revenues, and then your expenses are over on page seventy. This, this fund, I think everybody remembers, stormwater fee was passed at the very end of twenty twenty-two, so it became effective in twenty twenty-three. So we're just finishing, we're finishing up our fourth year of having the stormwater fee. What you'll see here between the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six budget on these operating expenses, line items, is really a lot of rebalancing. So there's a lot of pluses and minuses on some of these. And really, all we did here was tried to get it, we had enough of a sample size now for the past couple of years, that we started to dial in where we were really at on these line items. And you can see there are some of these, we had budgets of twenty-five thousand dollars we were spending much less, and some of them we were budgeted more, or less than we were spending more. So what you'll see there in the twenty twenty-six is we tried to actually get realistic numbers there. So we, we made several line item adjustments, but.
What about the professional service?
The professional service, we bumped that one up to, to bring in, we anticipate needing maybe some consultant services in stormwater in, in twenty twenty-six to help with some of our projects in that office. We find more and more that, you know, consultants are, are needed on some of these things. For instance, right now, we have, we have two stream bank restoration projects going on. If anybody's seen them, we have one at Roma Park, which is kind of up behind the east side tops off of East Thirty-Eighth Street. And then we have another one that took place down on the grounds of the wastewater treatment plant. That's the Garrison Run Stream down there. Both of those, we brought in an environmental consultant to do the design and oversight of the stream bank projects.
So what would be the projects projected for twenty twenty-six?
The projects, in twenty twenty-six, what we really have to do there is we're gonna have to continue to dial in a little bit on our MS four permit that we hold.
What does that mean?
Which is our, it's a natural pollutant discharge elimination system permit, but we, that's an annual, it's a permit we hold, and we have to do annual reporting on it. And so, a couple of years ago, we had put together what's called a PRP, which is a pollutant reduction plan. We have to show sediment reduction in the various streams in the city, such as Mill Creek, Cascade Creek, Garrison Run, Cemetery Run, et cetera. And so, we're in the process of meeting those goals. Both of the stream bank projects that I just talked about are a key part of that. But we're gonna have to do some data reporting on that and tie that together, so that we can actually pull the numbers together and go forward in some of these future reporting periods. I believe they gave us a five-year window to meet those sediment reduction goals.
Clarification, we hired three new people in the stormwater, or did we just move people and use stormwater money for it?
Well, well, no. If you remember, last year, we moved, we moved Sarah over to the, she, I think, she was split, I believe.
That's.
And I think we took her out of refuse.
Yeah.
And moved her, Chuck, you remember?
Yeah.
The fraction, the point, I think it's.
Not talk about that on the rate. Yeah, because it takes it off of residents, was the key thing.
Yeah.
We shouldn't say that.
Yeah. But no, no change there for this year. The one, the one change, there was a forty-seventy-eight, council, council members, we bought a street sweeper. So you can see, we had four hundred thousand budgeted in twenty twenty-five. I believe the street sweeper was, I believe, around three hundred forty-seven thousand. So that was a, kind of a big purchase we had in twenty-five. So twenty twenty-six, we lowered that line item back down. But as I already said, most of these are just some adds and deducts.
So we didn't, have we paid for it yet? Because it says year-to-date.
We, we did.
Okay, it's just not, okay.
I believe that's why you're, you were down to sixteen thousand, three fifty, was because the street sweeper came out of the four hundred.
Isn't that, okay.
So our, our standing balance at the end of, is that right, Lisa, at the end of October?
I went on to the next thing. I gotta go back, hold on a minute.
I think it just got reversed.
Like, the numbers are backwards?
Yeah. So that would be, what we spent would be there, right? Not what we have left? Is the year-to-date?
Yeah, we, we did not spend that this year.
It could be a tiny issue. Right.
Yeah. I think, I thought the street sweeper came out of that.
When did that come in?
It was a while back.
All right, we'll look into that and get back to you with that.
I'll check on it.
Yeah, because it just looks like there's a big bill that's gonna come.
Next is your sewer, we already discussed, seven-seven-one, seven-seven-three. So next up is refuse and recycling, begins on page seventy-nine. Spending, which is over on page eighty. This office, we had a, we had a small increase in the total allowance uniform benefits. That's all contractual. Line forty-seventy-eight machinery equipment. I just got new pricing on compactors, and they went up, I believe, twenty-five thousand dollars apiece approximately on the compactor. So that's why you see that line item increased in twenty twenty-six by fifty thousand dollars. Then we have a accompanying slide for refuse. Has our refuse rates. Quarterly bill, eighty dollars and seventy-three cents, the top, be the top right corner, with all the comparables going down the right side of neighboring communities. And I don't know, do you wanna talk at all about the refuse increase? Was it, was it four, four oh eight per quarter?
Yeah, the refuse increase is driven by the increase in expenses, and our staffing goes up contractually every year. And this is the rate that we need to meet this budget. If you look on the four oh three increase, it'd be on the five-year projection, which is at the back of your book on page ninety-two. And we've, we've talked about incremental increases each year, keeping up with the costs as they rise, rather than waiting two, three, four years and having a huge increase.
Which one is that on there?
It's the twenty-six budget column, and at the bottom of it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Write it down at the bottom, it's the rate per quarter, ninety-three oh five, up from Whoops, I'm on sewer. Eighty-seventy-three, up from seventy-six, sixty-five.
Page ninety-three.
Is there any way we can ever change that? I get calls from single people and senior citizens that only put one bag of garbage out, and they're having a hard time with the increases.
In the past, we talked about maybe selling bags, rather than having to charge people that, there are a lot of older folks in New York City that put out a country fair bag, and they're getting hit the same way. So I, I know what she's talking about, because I hear it quite often.
I understand that. We'd have to, that would take an extensive study to try to figure out who's doing, what households are putting out, how much trash.
Yeah.
And all, everybody else's prices would have to increase accordingly, because we need a certain revenue to cover these costs, so.
I, I think, like, when you look at, when you look at the list of where we're at at eighty-seventy-three, then comparables, I mean, you have to remember that we offer, you know, the unlimited pickup, the, the recycling, the compost, and the large item program. So we also have a lot of service there. And the glass, I know, is, is dumpster, they have those, like, three drop-off locations, but.
And also to address, even if this was done as a study to go to a bag system instead of a flat rate, cities that do that oftentimes have a huge increase in dumping. If you're paying per bag, people will go and save five dollars back by just dumping that bag in their own personal found landfills. So, I mean, even, even if you were to play with the numbers on this, it's not, it's something that you may not wanna do anyways, especially, you know, as, as a matter of litter and dumping around the city.
Yeah, I think this, then, we had talked about with code, it becomes another, because now we're sending out more code, now we, so.
I mean, there's a reason why none of the other cities do it this, that way, the larger They do that out in the, in the country, like, out in rural areas.
I think we're all understand that. We have to understand the people that are talking to us about it. You know, we can't compare the City of Erie to Fairview, or to Mill Creek, or to Harper Creek, because those are all people who have moved up and out of Erie. So I, I understand what everybody's saying about it, but I also understand how these folks feel. It's, there's no real answer to it, we gotta pay the paper, and everybody, it's just unfortunate that the folks at the bottom rung suffer the most at these small increases. Moving right on, Jason.
Anything else?
Any more? Can we move on?
Looks like Kathy's trying.
Golf.
Video's on.
Page eighty-three in your budget book. No real changes here. It's a enterprise fund.
Lost another victory up with J.C. Martin.
We budgeted, I think I said this before, we budgeted everything the same way as it was last year, because we don't know when the contract is going to be signed and what it's, what's going to be in this contract. So, but we assume we're, we're running the golf course, that was part of it, so.
Yeah, that wasn't a change.
So, yeah, we didn't change anything in there.
Wouldn't the agreement, wouldn't the agreement with the zoo change the budget?
The way it's written now, we would still essentially lease it back for a dollar, and we would run it like we are right now. So it would still, we would, it would still be our golf course to run without us owning the golf course.
The only, one problem I always had, and I never seen it, was the final plan, the drawings of, is they, they're gonna take the four and five holes and make it a total three, part three course? You know, I, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Neither do they.
Yeah, I think that's where the, the whole.
Attorney's are making their money. Going back and forth.
I don't think that study exists, yeah, yeah.
Then, the only other thing I have to, to tell council is, our, our last fund in Public Works is Liquid Fuels, and it's, it's also listed as a enterprise fund. Nothing, nothing really to discuss here. We got our letter, I think, last month, with our upcoming twenty twenty-six allotment from, from the state, and I believe that got, that was plugged in here, so that the numbers are, revenue should be accurate as far as what we anticipate, so. I guess that's, that's all of our funds.
That's it then, right? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Budget sessions adjourned.